Good evening. Welcome to the January 22 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Alternate Carol Rick will be joining us on the day this evening, but we have a regulatory matter, and we're all here, so we'll have to wait and have your participation during comments.
Thank you, John.
Thanks for being here, though.
Thank you.
All right. First up tonight, we don't have a minute, so we're going right to our agenda, which has exactly one site plan tonight for SP-9881-2024, construction of 232 units, single-family residential units at the Stevenson Metro Grove properties in the MXD Mixed-Use Development Zone. This is for the final site plan and presenting from staff. Jasmine, you're presenting tonight?
Yes, I am.
Jasmine Forbes is presenting from staff tonight, so please take it away.
Good evening. So, staff, before you present final site plan application, SP-9881-2024. This application is based on schematic development plan application, SDP-9558-2024, which was approved by the Mayor's City Council on March 18 of 2024. The project site is adjacent to the Watkins Mill Town Center development and consists of eight vacant parcels. The project is bounded by the Parklands at Watkins Mill Town Center Community and the unbuilt Urban Core to the west, the CSX Railroad to the south, and a city-owned property to the north. Existing access points to the site is from Exchange Avenue and Metropolitan Grove. This application was reviewed under the zoning ordinance in effect at the time of submission in accordance with Section 24-1.2 of the 2024 zoning ordinance. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-168 of the previous zoning ordinance, which requires the planning commission to grant final site plan approval. And now we'll have the project team do the presentation this evening.
Great. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Thanks, Jasmine. My name is Chris Malm. I'm with Kraftmark Homes. Also with me is Scott Wallace, our land use attorney from Miles and Stockbridge. And we have Jyoti Kisharma with Soltes, who's our civil engineer in the audience as well. We're excited to discuss our final site plan for the Stevenson Metro Grove properties, which, as Jasmine mentioned, we received SDP approval early in 2024, and we've been hard at work since then, finalizing the details to get this to final site plan. I believe this commission is already familiar with Kraftmark, so I'll be brief in our introduction. But for the benefit of anyone watching who may not know us, Kraftmark has been in business for 34 years. We're consistently ranked as one of the DC area's largest privately-held home builders, having built over 8,000 homes. And on this project, we're now partnering with Elm Street Development. Elm Street was founded in 1977 and has become one of the region's largest privately-held home developers, having developed over 325 communities and over 64,000 homes. So, we're grateful to have them as partners on this project as they bring with them a wealth of knowledge and experience in residential development. This slide shows an aerial of the property with our proposed homes shown in pink on the right. Looking to the north, there's a section of forested area, which is mostly city-owned land and provides a nice buffer between our project and I-270. Over to the east, there's the Montgomery County Vehicle Impound Lot. And to the northwest, those are the existing Parklands residences. Between us and them, there are the large vacant parcels, which, as you know, are the future site of the Urban Core. And lastly, to the south, we've got the Mark Station, which is a great amenity for commuters. I want to point out that the orange dotted line shown on this exhibit is meant to represent a temporary construction entrance, which I'll discuss in more detail later on. That said, as you probably recall, a portion of that orange dotted line, specifically the portion between Watkins Mill Road and the Grand Street Circle, represents an area of road that we plan to permanently build as part of our project. Again, I'll get into more on that a little bit later. This next slide shows our unit mix exhibits. Not much has changed from what we showed you at SDP with regard to the mix of unit types that we're offering. We're still proposing a total of 232 units, of which 36 will be affordable and 192 will be market rate. On the left, in blue, adjacent to the Urban Core parcels, those will be two-over-two condos. The orange units scattered throughout the center of the site are our 20-foot-wide affordable townhomes. The rest, the yellow, the green, and the pink, are all market-rate townhomes, ranging in width from 20 foot to 24 foot wide. The affordable units are indicated by the black dots, and as I said, there are a total of 36 for sale with their affordable units in the community. And they'll be split evenly between the workforce program and the MPDU program, as stipulated by city code. Most of our units are designed with rear-load garages, served by alleys in the back. The only exception are the townhomes in green along the northern perimeter, which will be front-load townhomes with backyards that face the trees. This next slide shows an internal circulation exhibit. Pedestrian circulation is shown in blue, and vehicular circulation is shown in orange. Primary access to the development is via Exchange Avenue and an extension of Parkview Avenue. And branching off from those existing roads, we've planned a comprehensive network of new streets, alleys, and sidewalks to make sure cars and people can travel smoothly throughout the site. We've also made sure there's good connectivity, not in just the up-down or north-south direction, but also in the side-to-side, east-west direction. In taking a look at the bottom left of this slide, you'll see we've maintained a connection to the Mark train, which, as I said earlier, is very convenient for commuters. And up top, we're providing a path to the city-owned land to the north, making sure the city and its residents gain access to that land as well. This next slide shows our project's green space. As you probably know, when it comes to developments like ours, there's a rule that 40% of the area must be dedicated to green area. And that's defined as both public and private open space and active and passive recreational areas. We're exceeding that requirement by devoting a little over 43% of the site to green area, which comes out to nearly eight acres. And we've got plans for several community amenity spaces and a variety of landscaping, which I'll get into on the next slides. The project's main amenity space, shown here blown up on the bottom right, will be located on the southern portion of the site. It sits adjacent to the approximately 10-foot-tall berm and 10-foot-tall sound wall, which will provide visual and sound protection from the train tracks. Amenities in that area will include a pool, clubhouse, tot lot, open space, and plenty of green space. We've also made sure that there's good pedestrian connectivity here from the rest of the site, so if you're a resident living on the opposite side of the community, it will be an easy and pleasant walk to get to the pool. As far as the other amenity spaces, our project also features an elongated mews, shown here on the left side. That mews begins between the 20-foot townhomes in the center of the site and runs north all the way to the city-owned Parkland, providing pedestrian connectivity to that forest area as well as visual connectivity to it. The other two spaces are smaller, but still provide additional green spaces for residents to enjoy, including a small plaza located at the terminus of Town Center Boulevard at Parkview, which will serve as, you know, an inviting entrance to the community from the future Urban Core. Our landscaping plan includes a variety of shade trees, ornamental trees, and evergreen plantings that are intended to provide year-round visual appeal and natural screening. We're incorporating a diverse mix of native and adaptive plant species to provide seasonal interest and reduce maintenance needs. Strategic landscaping around the clubhouse, pool, and tot lot will create inviting spaces for residents to gather and enjoy. And the mews and green spaces throughout the development will feature thoughtfully designed plantings to enhance the pedestrian experience and provide natural buffers between the residential areas. And street trees have been carefully selected and positioned to provide shade and contribute to the overall streetscape design. We've worked closely with city staff to make sure our forest conservation plan complies with all applicable city and state regulations. While unfortunately, most of the existing trees on the site will need to be removed in large part to the extensive regrading necessary to develop this site, a total of approximately four acres of forest canopy will be replanted within the site. And to help compensate for the removal of the existing trees, our forest conservation plan also includes approximately 2.2 acres of additional reforestation off-site. And an off-site parcel has been identified by city staff as being in need of reforestation, and reforestation planned for that parcel was included with our submission. This slide shows an external circulation plan, so we can discuss how traffic will be managed getting to and from the project, both from construction and from our future residents. First, I'll discuss the construction traffic. We're planning to use a combination of two temporary construction entrances. The first is located off of Metropolitan Grove Road, shown in the bottom right in yellow. The second has been added since the time of SDP, because as we got into the details of planning the development work, it became apparent that having construction access from both sides of the site would allow us to complete the development work much more quickly and efficiently. So, we worked with the owners of the Urban Core parcel to secure their permission to bring our construction vehicles across the Urban Core. An existing gravel construction road, previously used for similar purposes, runs along this path from the Urban Core all the way out to Watkins Mill Boulevard. So, our proposal is to actually reuse this gravel path while implementing all required sediment control measures and any other necessary improvements to ensure compliance with city codes. And as I mentioned earlier, as part of our development, we'll be proposing to build a portion of Town Center Boulevard. Specifically, the portion we'll be building starts with the circle at the bottom of Grand Street and goes left all the way to Watkins Mill Road. Our goal is to complete that section of permanent road as soon as possible, but we've committed to delivering it no later than the time we achieve 50% occupancy permits. But like I said, we hope to have it done well before then. So, in terms of traffic from our future residents, to start, they'll be using the existing Parklands road network to reach Watkins Mill Road. And right now, there are two ways in and out marked by the red arrows on this slide. When we complete that section of Town Center Boulevard, it will provide a third connection, shown here in yellow, helping to spread the traffic out more evenly. And looking ahead, when the Urban Core gets developed, our residents will have a direct shot from our community out to Watkins Mill Boulevard via Town Center Boulevard through the Urban Core. But in the meantime, our traffic impact study, which was submitted with our SDP, shows that the existing roads in the Parklands are more than capable of handling the extra traffic from our project, even before the Urban Core is up and running. And before I turn it over for questions, I'd like to mention that our architecture was intentionally included from this presentation because our plan is to come back before the planning commission in a couple months just to present our generic architecture for the whole site all at once. And so, we'll plan to dive in that later date. And Scott, did you want to mention anything before we open for questions?
Yes. Thank you for the record again. Scott Wallace with Miles and Stockbridge. I think, Chris, the conditions were acceptable, other than the one I'm going to talk about.
Correct.
Conditions of approval. So, and Jasmine, you haven't run through the conditions yet.
No, I haven't.
Right, okay. So, my comments relate to one of the conditions of approval. I can provide them now, or I can wait until Ms. Forbes gives them to you? It's up to you. Or you can take, and you can take questions about the project.
I'd go ahead and just
Sure.
present, discuss whatever you want to bring to the table. It's fine now.
Sure. So, Kraftmark does, again, generally is in agreement with the conditions, except one. They have, we have significant concerns with Condition 6, which requires payment of a school surcharge, known in the city as an UP, UPP, or FEE, of $5,700 per unit, approximately, due to a capacity deficit at Quince Orchard High School, which is the high school that serves the property. The requirement to pay the surcharge was not raised previously, including at SDP. In the county, a surcharge is required, if required, would be a condition of preliminary plan approval, which equates to SDP approval in the city. Requiring the surcharge now impacts Kraftmark's financial assumptions and ultimately, the affordability of the units in the project. There is a high level of certainty that when Crown High School opens in 2027, significant capacity will be created at Quince Orchard, and that school will fall below the triggers for the surcharge, the city's triggers. The current Montgomery County Public Schools CIP, which is the source document for the city's schools test, states that Crown High School will relieve overcrowding at Quince Orchard by at least 150 students. This is reflected in the county's current school test, which shows Quince Orchard at 95.7% capacity with a 77-seat surplus in FY '28, which is your APFO's test year. Quince Orchard is also projected to have more than adequate capacity in fiscal year '27, which is the likely time when students will start being generated by this project. In summary, based on the capacity projections for Quince Orchard High School, there is no nexus between assessing the surcharge on the project and the impacts the project will have on public schools. We've requested consideration of a change to Condition 6 to require that the surcharge be assessed, if applicable, at the time of permit issuance. I'm sorry, at the time of permit issuance, rather than this time. If at that time, at permit issuance, the high school or any school serving the project trigger the UP under the city standards, it'll be paid. Otherwise, no surcharge or UP will be required. If the condition, and I have the exact language if the planning commission wants to take this up further. But as revised, or a condition revised in this way would account for the impact of the development on public school system, but also ensure that an unfair and unlawful exaction will not be imposed on Kraftmark.
Okay. Well, let's do this. So, appreciate the comments and the thorough discussion of that point. I know staff has, and our city attorney will want to comment on that. So, let's leave it at that for now. Let me make sure I hear from the public, or we hear from the public, and then when we get into the discussion, we can engage on that a bit more.
Thank you.
If that's okay. Anything else on the presentation?
No.
Any questions for the applicant's team on the presentation? No? Let me clarify one thing. If you would put up the diagram that captures where you're doing the road improvements. Yeah, that one. So, you said that you will complete the construction of, is it, what's the name of the road there now?
So, this is Town Center Boulevard?
Okay.
Yeah. So, it's not, it's a proposed road. The right-of-way for this section, I don't know if my mouse is showing up on your screen.
It is.
That little section of Town Center Boulevard, the right-of-way, has actually already been dedicated, and there was a final plan approval in place for it.
Right.
Turns out, some of the things expired, and the Urban Core developers are currently going through to get those plans, like, ready for us to build, but they've made some good progress with the city, and we anticipate being
I just want to clarify, where, with the extent to which you're going to build this upfront?
Sure. From this circle out to Watkins Mill Road.
So, including the circle?
Yes.
Okay. And then from the circle east or to the right will be a temporary gravel?
Exactly.
Construction road. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that's here to comment on this application? Seeing nobody. I think you're all with the applicant's team. I will also then ask if anybody is watching online and would like to comment, please hit the raise hand button, and that will show up in our, to our tech team, and they'll be able to turn on the sound and let you comment. I don't see any hands up yet, but if they do pop up, we'll call on you. So, if you do want to do that, hit that hands-up button. In the meantime, Jasmine, what is the recommendation from staff, please?
Sure. So, since the package is posted, I've made some minor revisions to the conditions, so I'm going to read each one in the record. So, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, findings, and recommendation, grant SP-9881-2024 final site plan approval, and EMV-9882-2024 final forest conservation plan, fighting in conformance with Sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the city's zoning ordinance with eight conditions. And the first condition is applicant must submit revised site plans to address staff comments related to the site plan and landscape plan, storm drain, and grade establishment, and photometric plan cleanup to be approved by the planning and Department of Public Works staff prior to final signature of the plans. Two, applicant to submit lighting distribution plan to be reviewed and approved by Department of Public Works staff prior to issuance of a site development permit. Three, applicant to receive final dry utility sign-off prior to issuance of a site development permit. Four, applicant must receive third-party review and certification for all retaining walls prior to issuance of a site development permit. Five, the applicant to receive approval from utility companies to allow decks to encroach into the public utilities easement prior to final approval of the building elevations by the planning commission. Six, applicant to pay $5,777 MCPS utilization premium payment fee per dwelling unit prior to the issuance of any building permits. Seven, applicant to pay $69,565 to the city's Forest Conservation Fund for the off-site reforestation plan prior to issuance of any site development permits. And eight, applicant to make a $2,600 financial contribution to the city's Forest Conservation Fund, equivalent to the cost of 10 two-inch caliber large shade trees as mitigation for variance approval, EMV-9927-2024, prior to the issuance of any site development permits.
Question. For number seven, I think you said 2,600, and our package says 26,000?
Yeah, that was an error by accident. It was supposed to be 2,600.
It is supposed to be 2,600. Okay.
Thank you. And that's number eight?
Yeah, that'd be number eight.
Right.
Oh, I lost track. I'm sorry. Where is number seven and six?
Well, it came out at number two. She added on number two.
Yeah, so I add an additional condition.
Right.
Okay. Got it. Yeah, yeah.
And made a correction.
I understand. Okay.
Yes.
Got it. And one quick clarification. And we don't need to have a specific condition for it to come back with architecture?
Nope. Because it hasn't been approved, so it has, it's going to have to come back anyway, for a planning commission's approval.
So, it's implied, but, you know, ordinarily, we approve a final site plan, it includes architecture.
Yeah. But this time, it is not included, so it'll come back as a separate.
But we don't say anything about it?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. I would preface, I want to start the discussion real quick with addressing the applicant's proposal on the condition for the utilization premium payments to MCPS. I want to just, I want to even preface with a start of that, and maybe I can turn it over to staff, either Frank or Greg or Jasmine, to address that proposal.
You can go ahead, Frank.
You can go ahead.
I just want to say, as noted, so these regs were approved by council, and as noted, that final fees are finalized at final site plan, and a condition has to be added that those fees will be collected at building permits, so there's no way that staff and planning can waiver-change regulations.
Okay. So, it's not a condition that we're putting on it so much as an analysis of what the actual regulation or law is requiring, so we don't have any jurisdiction over waiving that? However, is there an avenue for that?
So, there's, in the city code, there is an opportunity for the applicant to request a waiver from the Mayor's City Council.
Okay.
But there's required findings.
Of course.
This is like a 2021, 22 Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, right?
Yes.
It's been a few years.
It also adopts a county-wide fee, because that fee is to be used for the purposes of the public school system.
Right. But I think, for the purposes of tonight's discussion, what's clear is that there's not, we don't have any authority to address that proposal, but to do that, for you to propose that to the council could be a way to address that. So, we can't take it out as a condition, because it's already required by the regulations, and we're just memorializing what the calculation is based on the unit count and the tier of school overcrowding.
Appreciate that. I, obviously, the approval is up in front of us. It'll be binding on us to go forward, and it needs to be addressed here. And, you know, if we pursue a legal remedy, it would have to be based on the condition. That's why we're bringing it up as an issue.
Fair enough. So, we know the, you know the landscape now. Okay. All right. There's, let me double-check here, make sure nobody has raised their hand. Okay. All right. Any issues with the proposed site plan that you want to bring up?
Question about, can you repeat again, once it's 50% billed out, that the Watkins Mill Town Center Road will be open enough for traffic? Is that correct? Is that?
That section, that one section from Watkins Mill to the circle, by the time we get 50% of our occupancy permits, correct?
So, not all the way through? Right?
My question is, all the way through the development, just up to the circle?
You got it.
Okay. I need that clarification. Thank you.
And I think, to add color to that, maybe you can flesh this out a bit. From the circle to this, this component of the development is really part of the Town Center development. It may change, may become something else once that is fully developed, right?
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
So, we've been over this for the last couple of years, right? And I think, thank you for the alignment of the pedestrian pathways through the site. I think that's going to be a great community builder. I think it fixed some of the jankiness of early sketch plans, which is what, you know, there's sketch plans, right? And they look, they look great now. I think, you know, a little tight, but they look great. Really appreciate the two-over-twos, in addition to the townhomes. I think we're in desperate need in the city for that kind of housing, so thank you. Be incredibly exciting to get this much housing at this kind of price point in the city as fast as possible. It's needed. My only, I mean, at this point, we're down to nitpicks, right? So, my only real nitpick is just that some of your sticks end up at that pedestrian, you know, five-foot sidewalk with a good chunk of presumably sod, you know, grass. There's real opportunity along those blank walls that are shared between two sticks to add some low shrubbery. I know there's a good bit of stormwater management that runs along some of those streets. You're not going to be able to put a tree in there. I was just trying to find the site plan, but I'm not going to bother wasting time looking for it. But there's the, our main street has a couple of blank blocks where you can't put a tree because there's stormwater underneath it. It's an opportunity for shrubs, right? And then you can come up with a palette that comes across the site. There's quite a few five-to-six-foot landscape areas between the sidewalk and the side of a stick on, you know, the shared stick pathways, little vias between the sticks that are showing in your landscape plan as nothing, right? And I think that's a real opportunity for you to create the continuation of those pedestrian pathways in order to get folks to walk from their townhome to the community center, from their townhome to the train station, right? And to the, hopefully, someday, a retail center. And I think, I don't, and I don't know what the condition is, and I don't know there needs to be one, but I think, and landscape plans at this level are notoriously lean. And in reality, you end up putting more in than you show us on the landscape plan, which isn't great, but I don't quite know how to handle that, but I think there's some real.
Well, they have a condition.
Yeah.
We're just looking at it, while you were talking about it. The staff still has comments outstanding on the landscape plan, and there's an update required as part of the condition of the approval.
So, actually, in the site plan package, there is a typical lot planning exhibit for certain lots, where more of the landscape is elevated for certain lots. I don't know that that's what you're looking.
Well, what I'm getting at is, you've already, you still have some outstanding comments on the landscape plan, right?
Yes.
So, this can inform how you wrap some of that up as you get to the end.
Yeah. I think, and those lots are great. You see some of the nice little landscape nodes that are, I mean, there's probably a dozen of them around the site, something like a dozen. And I think there's another dozen opportunities, particularly in the vias between the sticks. Traditionally, they get ignored. It becomes a fairly unattractive, you know, passageway to get those pedestrians through. I think, you know, the addition of four or five bushes, and it goes a long way. Again, it's going to be a little dark. It's going to get a little trampled. Dogs are going to be there on a regular basis. I'm not sure you want to put perennials there or anything. I totally get it, but I think there is an opportunity for something there along that brick siding wall to make it an even better pedestrian environment. You got like 98% of the way there. I'm asking for that last little bit. So, Jasmine, does that make any sense, when you go back and review these landscape plans? I think there's some, it's going to require the applicant's creativity, but there's some opportunity there for some additional continuation of, you know, what is essentially just three main pedestrian routes to be very modestly enhanced.
All right.
Some of it, you know, I know the property lines are weird and wonky, and some of the townhouse sticks, your property line is shown like out at an angle away from the building. There's all kinds of conditions. I get it, but there's also some opportunities there where the property line is pulled back. It's a community piece of dirt. Be a great place for some, for some evergreen shrubs, so.
Okay, good. Any other comments?
Chairman, Metropolitan Grove Road will not be open, obviously, for quite some time. How is the separation between that and the project itself? Will there be a wall? Will there be a barrier of some sort to keep people from wandering over there?
We do have a fence, so I think the way that our project works is we've got a, this is Metropolitan Grove Road right here, and the right-of-way that we're dedicating, I think, actually abuts the Metropolitan Grove Road right-of-way. So, I'm not sure we can actually put a fence right in that area. In the areas where we have, I think, our HOA parcel abutting Metropolitan Grove Road, we do have a fence. So, from like here down to the CSX, there's either a sound fence or like a shorter, like six-foot-tall privacy fence. And then, again, at the right-of-way, I'm not sure that we can put a separation there.
Okay. But I just want to make sure that the people who live in that area, obviously, there's a pathway there going down to the pool, that there's some kind of a barrier that prevent them from spilling into Metropolitan Grove Road.
You're talking about vehicles?
No, going to the recreation center, if someone's walking down alongside that area between Metropolitan Grove Road and the project itself, right? the project itself, right, where that, where the arrow's going, as you go down straight, further down, towards the pool.
Sure.
What does that look like? Is that a, is there a path there? I can't, it's hard to see.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure exactly.
As you go down, as you.
Can you see where his mouse is?
Yeah, as you proceed down, towards, towards the recreation center.
From, from the area that I'm hovering right now?
Correct, and going down.
Yeah, there, well, so the sidewalk, I think I'll kind of go the direct, most direct route, it would be like that.
Okay. So the section then that, that is facing Metropolitan Grove Road will have some kind of sound barrier or solid fence.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, but there, the condition of Metropolitan Grove Road at certain, at a certain point kind of, kind of peters out to, to not much of a road.
I understand.
You know, I mean, so I'm not sure what, what you're, if you look at this, I, there's not much happening much past the point where it turns off, turns off into the impound lot, right?
It's like a twelve-foot wide gravel path, really.
Yeah. And so really, the question is, is there a demarcation either with a fence or a solid, something, you know?
Right.
Primary that, that creates the edge of this neighborhood.
Where we have public right of way abutting the Metropolitan Grove Road right of way? No, I, I don't think that your road code allows us to put like a fence in your.
That's open, right.
Yes, but then when, when it becomes HOA parcel, that's abutting Metropolitan Grove Road about where my cursor is now, we have fence.
That was my concern.
But so, or is, does that set up a condition where from page north coming down, you have a fence, you have a gap in the fence at the public right of way, and then it picks up with a fence again?
There's no, there's no fence up here.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense. My concern is that you have a, you have a fence on either side that stops at this weird right of way.
It won't be like a gap, the, the, the fence here actually was part of our sound mitigation design, so that's the reason for it, but it creates that separation as well.
Makes sense. Anything else? Can I ask you to turn back to your cover page in your presentation, had a, had a rendering or a photo of some, presumably one of your proj, earlier projects?
Oh, sure.
So the, the comment I'll leave on the table is this is not a formal submittal for architecture, but it better come back looking something like this, and not, you know, and I don't want to be flip about it, but you know, this represents a certain richness and detail and variety in the way that the, the different units are, are developed some, some finesse in the way it's designed as opposed to some of the more standard production housing approaches. So I don't know, you know, we don't have design guidelines on this, this parcel, so.
So the design guides were approved as part of the S D P application.
And it covers it all, or just, just for this one?
Yep, it covers the entire Stevenson Metgrove Development.
Okay.
So includes invisions of architecture for the residential.
Frankly didn't review it before tonight, so I don't, I don't remember exactly what's in there, but.
Been a while.
Yeah, it's been quite a while.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate your kind words about the architecture shown here. This is actually from Craftmark Homes Elm Street Joint Venture Community, and well, it won't be an example replica, we borrowed heavily from it, so you can expect to see something very similar to this when we come back.
But that's the quality we would expect coming, coming for the, for the next phase.
It will go a long way to making it one meeting. Supposed to four or five.
And I do want to, this is gonna sound like I'm dwelling on it or beating a dead horse, but I do want to understand better where the parcel abuts the Metropolitan Grove right of way physically, not, not legally where the lines are, but, but physically the character of this, as you build up to that point, what happens at the edge? And I don't know which plan, if you need a landscape plan, if you need, but, but just get in a little closer and, and explain more clearly what happens at the edge relative to really there. Maybe you need an aerial shot, because the, the actual improvements along Metropolitan Grove, like I said, they kind of, they're not very well defined right now. It may never be.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, this kind of just zoomed out the aerial one. So, I mean, what I can tell you is that this, this section, you know, where my cursor is right now, is, is a standard city road section. I believe it's sixty-two foot wide, so it's kind of prescribed, you've got road in the middle, you've got a green strip, you've got a sidewalk.
Right.
And.
Parallel parking.
And some parallel parking in there.
Okay.
And then, is, is there a one-foot maintenance strip outside the sidewalk? I can't remember. Unfortunately, I can't zoom in on this screen to show you, but I, I do know. Yeah, I believe there is. I believe after the sidewalk, you get a little one-foot maintenance strip. So that, that is gonna be what abuts the Metropolitan Grove Road right of way.
Right of way.
And I think that was part of something staff wanted in order to create a connection in case something ever wanted to go through there, you guys had right of way connecting to right of way.
Right. That's fair, but I'm thinking about in the interim, or maybe for quite a while, what, what happens? Is the, is Metropolitan Grove, is that a city road or is that a county right of way?
It's a city road.
City count right of way, okay. So, again, you know, the quality of that right now, I don't know what's happening back there now, if it's, you know.
I've driven back there, scratched my car doing.
Once you start having people live there and it's the edge of their neighborhood, if somebody kind of owns that space to make sure it's secure and clean and all that, it's not the responsibility of the HOA. So it just becomes kind of this question about how that edge is defined for whoever has to maintain and oversee it. And it may turn into more of a, of a, excuse me, a city issue to make sure that the right of way is, you know, policed or maintained, whatever that might look like.
Yeah, we maintain our own right of ways. Obviously, the vacant properties next door would be under the purview of neighborhood services.
Yeah.
To be looked at as well, to make sure.
But once it, like I said, once, once there's a, a lot of activity or a neighborhood abutting it, there's other things that may happen there with, you know, use and unintended uses, things like that. But as long as there is, in the course of building out the neighborhood, of, of a well-defined edge of some kind, whether that's curbs and gutters and fences and trees, whatever that might be, it's not clear on here how that's the character of that necessarily, but I, I do want you guys to pay attention to that so that we know there's, there's a way to understand that. Does it make sense? Jasmine?
It does.
Okay, so anything with the conditions? Anybody have any concerns with the conditions? All right. As I said, really, the, the issue with the utilization premium up, is that what you call it, up, up fees?
U Z A S U premium.
Whatever, I mean, that's, that's been adapted, adopted in the city for some time now that is based on a calculation that's outside of our control, and I, I mean, I'll say, it's a reasonable question, you know, if, if there's a school under construction that may relieve that, but as you well know, we have no idea what that boundary is gonna be. That, that process has just started, and it may or may not result in numbers that are, that are favorable to Quinns Orchard, just, you never know, right, until they get through that process. So there's really nothing we, we legally have any control over there, and practically from a planning perspective, there's no way to guess that it's gonna turn out in favor of, of Quinns Orchard until that actually happens. So we've got to, we have to endorse the, the recommendation from staff for that condition.
I appreciate that. I would just add, though, I think you will have an opportunity, I don't know if you generally have an opportunity to comment on the A P F O when it gets redone every year, or when the school test is looked at, but to the extent it's an issue that you think maybe could be clarified in a certain way, or made more, you know, that, that maybe they should be, appreciate that, that comment being made to the mayor and council.
Understood, and, and it's a dynamic environment now because there is school construction underway, you know, on a, another place and time, that isn't always the, the case, so it's, it is a little bit unique, but, but we do have the ordinance in place, and that's what we have to endorse at this point.
Anything is the concern that, so the, the.
Just that one there.
So, yeah, so the, the condition is clear that they have, that you pay it, right?
Yep.
But is it, is it easier to say that the applicant must comply with section whatever the U P P is, which is generally equivalent to a number that will help them plan?
The regulations are pretty clear, that does say it has to be a condition of the approval.
It does, okay. But as a condition of the approval that we reference that section. The amount, okay.
Yeah, it's very specific.
I kind of remember that now, actually. And I think, I think I might have made some snide comment at the time, but.
Well, you know.
Why not?
All right, anything else? Any other concerns? No? All right. Are we ready for a motion then?
Just to be clear, are we at seven or eight conditions?
Eight conditions.
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony, staff reports, findings and recommendations, grant S P nine eight eight one dash twenty twenty four, final site plan approval, and E N V nine eight eight two dash twenty twenty four, final forest conservation plan, finding it in conformance with section twenty four one seventy and twenty four dash one seventy one of the city zoning ordinance with eight conditions is ready to the record.
Second.
So moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, good luck. Look forward to seeing the next package for the architecture.
Thank you very much.
All right, that was it for our regulatory agenda tonight. Next is from the commission. Danny, can I start with you, please?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Nothing for me this evening.
Congratulate Jasmine on her promotion.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes, congratulations.
And Greg, maybe just say what it is.
Yes, please.
Yes, I'm excited to announce that Jasmine has been promoted to the community planning manager position, my old position, as you remember. She started Monday in this new capacity, so.
Great.
From now, you will see her at all the planning commission meetings, move forward.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jasmine.
Taken off the record, also congratulations. On the record, actually.
It's on the record, Jasmine.
Jasmine's been a pleasure to work with in the regulatory context, and her, her next, they're gonna really benefit for her in the next, next department, because she's.
Great. Thanks for saying that.
Great, great. Nothing from me, John, this evening, thank you.
I mentioned last week the idea that we would start some discussions here and there about trends, all that, right? So I'll hang an idea out there. I'd never want to fully endorse social media and the content of that because it's somewhat dubious at times, if not most of the time. I do want to mention a place that, that I find some really interesting thought starters, and it's called Strong Towns. And I happen to follow them on Instagram, but there's other places that they pop up and, and show theirselves. Often, solutions that look like they're fully baked and, but probably aren't, but they are great thought starters, and they, they, they point to some interesting ways that towns and activists have figured out pedestrian-friendly tactics in, in places that didn't start out that way, and, and doing it with sometimes very little impact to the municipal budget or even to the actual physical, physical infrastructure, but subtle things like how crosswalks are painted or not, how lighting is deployed, how landscaping is carefully placed, and in some cases, how some novel little elements within the site are, are used. And always, again, with a, with a, with a sense that slowing down traffic or, or creating a safer environment for pedestrians to cross streets and enjoy their streets is, is a priority.